Looks like we do have some awards and proclamations today.
Item 3.1, "The week of February 16th through February 22nd, 2014 as Engineers Week in the city of Salina." Elliot Harris, President of the Smoky Valley Chapter of KSPE, will read the proclamation.
Elliot?
Good afternoon. Alex said I'm Elliot Harris, President of Smoky Valley Chapter of the Kansas Society of Professional Engineers. I'd like to take this time to read the Engineers Week proclamation. Proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas. Whereas George Washington, the first President of the United States and founding father of our nation, was a distinguished military and agricultural engineer, as well as an excellent surveyor; and whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs; and whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to designing an information superhighway; and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge; and whereas we will look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the future; and whereas this year's theme for the event is "Let's Make a Difference," and whereas it is appropriate to recognize engineers' countless accomplishments and contributions during the week we celebrate George Washington's birthday. Now therefore, I, Barbara V. Shirley, Mayor of the City of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of February 16th through February 22nd, 2014, as Engineers Week in the City of Salina, and I urge all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the engineers in our community for their contributions to our health, safety, and welfare. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my handy and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this 10th day of February, 2014. Barbara V. Shirley, Mayor.
Do you have any activities planned?
Yes, we help out with the Great Plains Regional Future Cities Competition. The regional competition was held January 25th in Lawrence on the University of Kansas campus. This competition consists of middle school students, and they create cities on computers and build a three-dimensional tabletop model to scale, provide a brief written narrative of their city, a short skit, and answer questions from a panel of judges. The regional winner this year was Southwest Middle School from Lawrence, and they will compete in the national finals, February 15th through the 19th, in Washington, DC. Schools from our area that competed were Republic County Middle School and Concordia Junior High had two teams. We also sponsor the regional math counts competition. It was last Saturday at KSH Salina. We had 57 mathletes from 10 public and home schools. The statewide competition will be held March 8th. It used to be in Salina. This year, they're moving it to Topeka, at Washford Middle School. And there'll be a national math counts competition, May 9th, in Orlando, Florida. We have, in addition to sponsoring the regional one here, we have volunteers that help with the statewide competition also. And then, February 18th, next Tuesday, we'll have our annual Sweethearts and Awards Dinner, where we recognize outstanding achievement in engineering, teaching, and citizenship, and service to the community. And on behalf of the Smoky Valley Chapter, I'd like to present you guys with E-Week buttons. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Great, well, I have your signed proclamation. Just one quick question, though. I hear that lots of younger girls are getting into this. So, do you see a lot of girls at the junior high level getting into engineering and getting interested in mathletes?
I know there's a big push for that. I know especially at K-State, this was early 2000s, there are really a lot of females coming into the engineering majors, so...
Right. I've just noticed around some of the junior highs, you know, you see more pamphlets and stuff towards the younger girls, and I think that's just really cool, because that's something you don't see a lot of young women in.
They're making a big push for that, yeah.
Yes, that's great. I have that for you. Thank you. Now, we move on to citizens' forums. This is a time for anybody that has anything they'd like to talk about today with the city commissioners. That's not on today's agenda. Now is your time. Okay, nobody? All right. We do not have any public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time today, so we'll move on to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, "Approve the minutes of February 3rd, 2014."
Is there anything that a commissioner would like to amend from the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agendas and the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion in the second to approve consent agenda as-is. All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. Move on to administration.
Item 7.1, "Second reading ordinance number 14-10730, amending Section 5-25 of the city code to permit consumption of alcoholic liquor on Salina Bicentennial Center parking lot and grounds."
Ordinance number 14-10730 was passed on first reading on February 3rd, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions for staff on the second ordinance, or second reading? Is there any public comment on this matter? CNN, I'd entertain a motion.
Ma'am Mayor, I move we adopt on second reading ordinance number 14-10730.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Could I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Item number 7.2, "First reading ordinance number 14-10731, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas for the purpose of financing improvements to the city water's distribution system."
Ms. Tasker? Got a big book here from you. That's a lot of reading.
It does take some time to get through.
Do you do all this, or does your department put all this together for us?
The loan agreement actually came from the Department of Health and Environment. We just read it to make sure it's about our project.
Well, thank you. Glad you're reading. That's important. You don't want to see somebody else's project.
That truly has a timer to it.
Like paying for your water system in Abilene, yeah.
Sometimes a word doesn't get changed similar to that, so it does mean you should pay attention. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In October of 2013, the city commission authorized staff to complete and submit a loan application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan from the Kansas Public Water Supply Loan Fund. The loan was approved for an amount not to exceed $4,250,000. Of that, $4 million is allocated for water distribution system improvements, and the remainder is contingency and loan origination fee. The loan is for a term of 20 years at a rate of 2.78 percent. She may remember in February of 2013, we executed a similar loan. It was for the downtown well field and $4 million worth of water main improvements. That loan at that time was for $9,330,000, and the rate at that time was 2.12 percent. So, the rate has increased slightly over a year. And this loan differs from a bond issue in the fact that we don't receive $4,250,000 at the beginning of the project. It's similar to grant reimbursement. We expend the money, then we request reimbursement from KDHE. The Kansas Department of Health has required that the attached ordinance number 14-10731 be adopted and published in the official city newspaper. Once the ordinance is passed, the loan agreement and the Exhibits A through J will be submitted to KDHE. The main purpose of the ordinance is to dedicate a source of revenue for the repayment of the loan. The cost for the proposed improvements is included in the 2014-2018 rate study. It's anticipated that the first semi-annual payment of slightly over $139,000 will be due February 1st of 2016. Staff recommends ordinance number 14-10731 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Tasker? Thank you. Is there any public comment on item 7.2? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 14-10731 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions for Ms. Tasker? Thank you. Is there any public comment on item 7.2? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number 14-10731 on first reading, authorizing the execution of a loan agreement with the state of Kansas.
Second.
I have a motion in... Second. All those in favor? All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.3, "Award the bid for five police package vehicles."
Lieutenant Norton?
Back during the 2014 budget process, we were awarded, or granted, two vehicles in the budget process for $75,000. And then, we reassessed our fleet later in the year, first part of this year, and determined that we needed three additional vehicles. Came back to the commission on January 27th and asked for the funds for that, which was That was granted. Came to a total of $185,427. We had been informed that the bid closing for, or actually, the closing for vehicles manufactured for 2014 was going to be towards the end of February. So, we had put out a bid at that time for the two vehicles we were already approved for, and along with trade-in of a 2001 Chevy Impala and a 1998 Ford Crown Vic. We had three bids that came back. Long MacArthur came back with the lowest bid at $26,959.81 per vehicle, and they were also the highest on the trade for the two vehicles. With that in mind, we approached them about the three additional vehicles we were approved for in 2014. They agreed to the same per-unit price for those, as well as $3,500 apiece for the vehicles that we had intended to trade in this year, the additional vehicles. We would like to recommend that Long MacArthur be awarded the bid for the five police vehicles, marked police vehicles. That the two vehicles we originally listed as trade-ins, the 2001 Chevy Impala and the 98 Ford Crown Vic, Bob Peck suggested that we might be able to sell those on public surplus auction, get a little bit more money than what the trade-in was. But we do think the trade-in of $3,500 is a good value, and would recommend going with that for a total trade-in of $10,500. This will help us get our vehicles into the fleet sooner and help also probably insulate the city from any cost increase that may occur in the 2015 model. So, all in all, if all five vehicles were purchased, we'll come to $134,799.05, less the trade-in. And then, we have some, of course, equipment that'll need to go into the vehicle, and that comes to about $44,492.25 for a total of $168,791.30. An overall savings of $16,456.
I'm really surprised how close all the bids were, within dollars, on one and two. I'm just glad it's our local dealership was our lowest one. That's fantastic. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I just have a quick question on the reusable equipment, the $44,000. What exactly... What is that?
Well, and this is a little higher than normal, because we're switching from one vehicle platform to a new vehicle platform. I think it was in 2011, Ford stopped making the Crown Vic police package. We're transitioning to a new vehicle platform and a utility-style vehicle. One of the major expenses is the partition and the seat for transporting prisoners is over $2,000. We also are wanting to put new light bars on these vehicles as well. The light bars we currently have, I think, were purchased in 2004, 2005, so they're several years old. They're out of warranty. So, that's part of the expenses, and there's some other equipment that's not quite as expensive that needs to be, like for the video camera. It has a new bracket for this particular vehicle, things of that nature.
Okay. So, it's not stuff that we're reusing from something else? It's...
Some of the stuff will be reused. When we purchase new vehicles in 2015, as these vehicles are being replaced, or 2016, whatever the case may be, some of this equipment can be reused. Part of the problem here in the increased expense is, like I said, going from one platform to another, and things not being able to fit into those vehicles.
Okay. So, this is supplementing what we're reusing, so it's sort of the add-ons?
Yes.
Okay.
So, does this pretty much commit us to a certain brand and type of vehicle for the next round, then?
Not necessarily, because we still have several Crown Vics that are still on the fleet, and either way...
I'm talking about the equipment that will be going into these vehicles.
Right. Yes, that in order to go into a new vehicle, it would have to probably fit into the Ford Explorer Utility.
Okay.
And the same thing was true with the Crown Vics, is when we had those, that equipment couldn't go into a Dodge Charger or some other make-a-vehicle.
So, when we made this decision, it was a pretty major decision, because you're likely going to be buying the same model and make...
Stick with it, yes, because...
Until they stop producing it, perhaps.
Right.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Lieutenant. Do we have any public comment or questions on this? CNN, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the award to Long MacArthur Ford and go with option one, with the five marked police car vehicles, in the amount of $124,299.05, the $134,799.05 before the trade-in allowance of the three 2011 Crown Vics, in the amount of $10,500, and place the 2001 Chevy Impala and the 1998 Crown Vic up for auction and authorize an additional $44,492.25 for the purchase of reusable equipment, for an overall cost of $168,791.30.
Second.
It was a mouthful.
It was a mouthful. I just wanted to make sure I got those numbers in there. I often leave the numbers out, yeah.
You did good.
And I have a question about that option one before we... You seconded that, didn't you?
He did.
Okay. And just real quick, because having the two vehicles not... Were they offered the $3,500 trade-in on each of those as well? And we're figuring that we can get more than that on these? What was the trade-in that was...
Like 800 or 900, something like that.
Yeah, 800 and 500, yeah.
Right, right. On the 2001 Chevy Impala...
Oh, right there in the parentheses, okay. All right, 800 and 500, okay.
I think it just felt like, can't get a better deal, yeah.
I have a Chevy Impala. I don't think I could give it away. Good luck on the Chevy Impala. I had a motion in a second on item 7.3. All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries 5-0.
Well, I thought for $3,500, let's take it.
Yeah, yeah, no, 800. Of course, we may see at the auction, we may wish we took the 800. You never know, sometimes, yeah.
Item 7.1, "Authorizing agreement with McCrown Gordon Construction LLC for the preconstruction services for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations, project number 13-3014."
7-4, just for clarification on that?
Dion?
I got 1-4 on mine.
I have 1-4 on mine.
I have 7.4.
That's a seven. Some glasses.
13-3014.
Oh, 1, no, it was item 7-4.
Oh, okay.
I thought you were reading that.
Commissioner Blanchard's having problems today, goodness.
It's a tough crowd today.
Put your glasses back on.
No, he was reading right. We were talking about two different things.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. We're taking the next steps in the Bicentennial Center renovation project, and as such, the next domino that we need to have fall or check off is to secure the services of a construction manager at risk. We went through an extensive RFQ process. We had eight firms submit to us RFQs. We reviewed those pretty thoroughly, identified four firms that we believe best met the criteria we were looking for from the guidelines within our policy. We interviewed those four firms. Part of the interview team, just to go through them, Ron Wrightout from Global Spectrum, Jason Colish from Global Spectrum, David Dreisel from Convergence Design, Kristy Osmeier from Convergence Design, Mike Skreg, and myself. We spent the better part of a day interviewing the firms. We had some snow, so we came back another day and did another round. So, we had an interesting process, but very, very thorough. Very impressed with the firms that came through, very impressed with the presentation, and felt like we had some strong choices and candidates to bring to you today. As such, a lot of the importance of this, just to give you a little bit of background with the construction manager at risk, is to get them on early in the process, because we want to have them involved in a lot of the early phases. Everybody we've talked to, all the information we've gathered, has really spoke about how important that is. As such, we crafted and shaped this first one for just preconstruction services while we tried to negotiate for the remainder of the package, just to give you that upfront. So, that's kind of how we're proceeding here. Some of the things that would be involved in the preconstruction services would be cost estimation, constructibility, bidding, and then obviously ultimately to the construction process, provided we could come to terms. We have a recommendation for you, and that is McCown Gordon, out of Manhattan, Kansas. They received fantastic reviews on all of the reference checks that we have done. They have completed in excess of 800 projects in the last 15 years, 500 of which were some type of renovation, which I think that is important to note, because renovations tend to be a lot more tricky than new construction a lot of times. Furthermore, 80% of their projects have been performed in a collaborative or integrated model, i.e., very similar to what we are working with here. And with an average construction size or construction budget of $6 million, so again, right in the wheelhouse of the things that we're looking at here. The preconstruction services at this point are for $5,000. Our intent is to negotiate and try to get to the next step, which would be for the full package as quickly as we can. But basically, this would be a 30-day agreement, and the city manager would have the ability to roll that over if he needed to, if we weren't complete with negotiations. Having said that, staff's recommendation is that you would authorize an agreement with McCown Gordon Construction, and we move forward with the negotiations for the rest. With that, I would open it up for questions.
I just have a question. I was looking through the white pages, just on the insurance, on the personal insurance. If somebody gets hurt, is the city of Salina cover that, or is it the Bicentennial Center, like subcontracting insurance for this person or people that are working on this? How does that work? Somebody falls and breaks their leg?
Greg, I might check to you, or how you want to...
Because it didn't really say in the insurance, you know, part of it. It's kind of vague.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Your question had to do with who's responsible for payment, or...
Right. Who covers that? If somebody gets hurt. If somebody gets hurt while they're doing this construction project, you know, is it the Bicentennial Center? Is it us? Is it... How does that work?
Well, ultimately, and keep in mind that this, I guess you would call it kind of an interim agreement, is more of, and this is on the format that we utilize for consultants. So, we're not talking about the way the insurance coverages will be structured in the ultimate agreement that deals with the actual construction project. So, I think if you think of this person or the firm in this role more of in a consulting role, hopefully, that makes more sense. But if you look at Schedule D, you'll see that they... I don't know if you have that there at hand. It'd be toward the end of the document. Is that coming up for you there? Is it...
Exhibit D?
Yeah, Exhibit D.
Right. So, the workers' comp, that would be the city? Is that correct?
No. We're speaking... You're looking here on Schedule D at the requirements made of the consultant, is the term used in this case, for the representative of the construction company that's involved in this phase. So, when you see consultant, that is referring to this, to the company. They have the responsibility, as you look at two, you'll see that they have professional liability coverage responsibilities. They have commercial general liability responsibilities. That'll generally be in the event of, unlikely in this scenario, but if you had injury to a third person who made a liability claim, then they also are required for business automobile liability, is the third component of what is required of them, in case there is an accident, if they're driving while they're here performing that function. Then, of course, they would have the responsibility, as they would normally carry their workers' compensation coverage, and that's the fourth and last component of what insurance is required of them. So, you have that combination of four subcomponents that would be the usual requirements we make of anyone in a consulting-type role.
Okay. Maybe it was the consulting that confused me a little. Sorry to make that so complicated.
Yeah, it's a little different, and it will be... It will be a little different when you ultimately see the contract that is finally entered into with this firm, assuming that goes that way.
Thank you.
Yes. And I would also add, too, we have Todd Knight from McCown Gordon here, if you have any questions for him specifically, but he's available for questions as well.
Okay. Did we have any other questions for staff?
Yeah, just a... I had a couple, and perhaps Mr. Knight can answer these kind of more directly, and those are... One is just some of the projects in their portfolio, just maybe some of them that we may be familiar with, some in the area, and so on.
Sure.
And then, also, the level of experience that they may have, if any, with Convergence Design in this type of construction manager at risk.
I will check to Todd right now.
Sure, thank you. Yes, as far as projects that you might be aware of, one being the Flint Hills Discovery Center, right down the street in Manhattan, Bartle Hall Expansion in Kansas City, several other projects, KU Med, significant-sized projects in the Kansas City-type area. And then, we've also completed the Greensburg High School project when the tornado went through, so...
And on those projects with the... Obviously, that this building will be in some level of operation during the construction process, that that's not...
Yes, not a problem at all. As Dion mentioned, over probably 60, 65% of our projects are completed in a renovation-type atmosphere, in a live operating facility.
Right. And then, with Convergence?
Convergence is actually a new firm in Kansas City, but we have experience working with those architects and designers when they were a previous contractor, or a previous designer, populace, actually, in Kansas City.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, just one, and it might be kind of for you, Jason, even. This kind of puts two of the pieces of the puzzle together, and then the representative, the project management type thing. When would that be? Just to kind of see on the horizon what's out there on this.
Yeah, that's the next step, is for us to go through the process, to find that person who'd be the owner's representative, because when McCown Gordon is finished with this small phase, bringing them in with the designer to integrate all that, the next step, obviously, will be to negotiate a contract and then enter into a construction agreement. And so, by that time, we'll want to have our owner's representative with us, so that we're ready to go with them, and we don't hold them back. So, that's what the staff's working on right now, but that'll be... What's your timeline on that, Dion? Three, four weeks, bringing something back?
Yeah, I think it's a shade longer, 30 days.
About 30 days, bringing that back for approval.
So, our owner, our rep won't be involved with this preliminary phase of...
No, and they really, in this case, really wouldn't need to be. The key for that rep is really during the construction phase of the project, to represent us.
I have a question about the commencement of construction that's part of this. And I saw June 2014, all of a sudden, Rick Flag... I saw June 2014, on the Sunday, red flag, river festival. How does this dovetail with that event?
Well, I don't think we have specifically addressed that piece of it, but we do have potential, for instance, Bombers playoff games that would go into June, so that June is somewhat of a placeholder at this point, again, depending on how some of the final pieces work out. But, obviously, and as we talked about too, we understand that the facility will have to be operational at times, at least for certain portions of the building, so that was questioned very extensively in the process to how to maintain that, how to be able to do that, how to make sure that we were maximizing dollars by not being overly protective, if that makes sense, but at the same time, had some built-in mechanisms in place where we could utilize the facility with proper communication and notice.
Would there be any staging area requirement at that, during that particular time for construction equipment, that kind of thing?
You know, I would probably check to Todd on that a little bit. I speculate that with that early in the process, I'm not sure where we would be at. And again, it's probably worth mentioning, the timeline right now, we have listed as a 14-15 piece. But, as we go through the process here in the next few days, if you will, of developing the scope and defining that, there may be opportunities to tweak, if you will, the scope to better maximize our dollars. Again, just depending on how we're staging, how we are leveraging the resources, how we're utilizing those. But, to get back to your specific question, I would probably have Todd check to that on kind of what their early staging protocols have been for other operations and other ones that they've been on.
Sure. As far as staging areas, the facility, of course, is quite large, significant amount of storage available, so I would tend to believe that most of our equipment materials would be stored inside the building. If there are any large equipment-type items, those types of things, we would secure that in a gated enclosure to keep public safe, those types of things, put signage appropriately, direct traffic, wayfinding, those types of things. So, it would absolutely be considered, safety is the utmost importance, so we would complete that appropriately.
Good deal. Do we have any other questions for staff? All right, thanks, guys. Do we have any public comment on this matter? No public comment, I'd bring it back to the commission.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the attached agreement with McCown Gordon Construction LLC for preconstruction services for the Salina Bicentennial Center renovations, project number 13-3014.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. That motion carries 5-0. We have no development business, go into other business. Commissioners, do we have anything under other business?
No, just pass on to the street workers, great job. I mean, it really was, I mean, I don't recall, and I saw a few letters where people were saying, oh, nine years ago, you know, the snow was better. I can't remember last year, let alone nine years ago, but I do remember that we didn't have 12 inches of snow nine years ago. I think we had, you know, the occasional, I mean, I think for 20 years, most kids that are under the age of 20 probably didn't know what snowed in Kansas for the last 20 years, but quite a, I mean, getting hit with multiple storms, and they did a great job, and they were out there working away. And I don't know, is this the first year where they've done the drive with the, where they pick up all the center stuff? I'd never seen that before, where they just run three carts down the center and...
No, we do that downtown, is it, all the time, we've done that for years and years.
Really? I'd never seen that before, it was pretty cool.
Yeah, they've done it before.
Well, the reason for that is you can't really push the snow to the side of the parking.
Right, yeah, yeah.
So, you have to put it to the center of the street.
Yeah.
And then, we've got a snow blower that's mounted to a front-end loader, and then, usually, is it after we get the arterios collectors and residentials in good shape, we'll come back with a night shift, and it may be not until day two, to be able to load that up in the night when there's less traffic out there.
Well, it was great. I had a friend in from Minnesota, of all places, who they know snow, obviously, up there, and he had been down in Wichita, and he came up and without anything, for me at all, he said, man, did you guys not get much snow up here? I said, well, yeah, we, you know, got as much as we like. I just came from Wichita, and I felt like I was in an episode of Ice Road Truckers down there on their highways, on their roads. And he came here and he actually commented, I said, well, would you believe we actually have received like some mail where people didn't think we were doing a good job? And he says, that's crazy. He says, this is great, I mean, how quick it was. So, pass on at least for me, and I'm sure probably the other commissioners on this when I could speak, and they did a fantastic job, and really, really proud of them.
Yeah, the crews did a great job, and we had great supervision.
Is that like a self-compliment? What do you mean, you had great supervision? Aren't you their boss?
Good job, good job. And pat yourself on the back there.
Brent Buckwald, I would say, and Bob Klein, and Rich Hill, and Dennis DeWitt.
Right.
Those four guys did a great job.
If you can pat them on the back for us, that would be fantastic.
Commissioners, something... We could probably teach Atlanta a thing or two about...
Yeah, we sure could. Yeah, that was a bad deal.
You don't probably expect them to prepare too much in Atlanta, but that's where the notification's real important. A couple of things, too. In the media, you hear of other communities that are, you know, didn't have enough salt on hand, and of course, we use other product other than salt to help us with the colder temperatures. And also, Mike and his crew did a great job of being prepared, making sure we had adequate supply of our chemical material. That's a big part of it, too, you don't want to run out. We had plenty of it, because they ordered ahead, didn't have any trouble getting that material, had it out ahead of time, and that's a real big deal, when you have the right chemical underneath the snow, to try to keep that from bonding in that driving area, it's really more effective in the driving area, obviously, but that was the difference, and that and just the dedication, everybody working hard. And as my grandma used to say, she'd say, you better be careful, you're going to break your arm. I said, what are you talking about? She said, patting yourself on the back. We may have dinged ourselves into another one-foot snow before the end of the year.
Yeah, we don't need that, yeah, we don't need that.
Since we are talking about roads, I do have a question. Who clears the on-ramps and off-ramps? Is that city or county?
I believe that's KDOT, but...
KDOT, who's that on the interstate?
They haven't done a very good job on ramps.
That's KDOT.
I spun around today on my way onto the interstate, and I travel a lot, so...
Officer, that would be too fast for existing conditions over here, you may want to hit your ticket.
The Chevy Impala, yeah, back to the Chevy Impala deal.
Well, yeah, interesting, because they did a great job on the actual interstate, so I did notice a few places with the ramps.
Yeah, the ramps are terrible.
Lot of straight roads.
Yeah, that's right. Well, they did a great job. Like I said, it's not, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of miles of street and roadway, and probably still some snow from cars being parked along there, but as an overall, you can pretty well get from point A to point B in town from the get-go, and that's great, so appreciate it.
Well, and you know, when we made the decision not to cancel city offices, that's a big deal for us, to close city offices is a huge deal, because a good number of our employees still have to work, even if we do that. You have police and fire and utilities and public works, and then some others. And basically, I had two questions for my general services staff. One is, is when do we expect the heaviest part of the snow to end? And two, based on that, do we think we can get the roads scraped, where they're just at least passable by the commute the next morning? And they said, 11:00 or 12:00 that evening, the road, the snow should quit for the most part, and yes, we believe that we can have all roads, including residential roads, scraped by the commute for the next morning. And I said, well, that's why I needed to know, there's no reason for us to close offices, so we left them open based on that, and they did it. So, very proud of them.
We should ask our county parts, counterparts, why they closed.
Yeah, and one thing I don't know, I don't know what their proportionate share of employees that live in the rural area versus the city, that could be a factor, I don't know if it was or not, but we just, I figured we had the information, let's ask and get it, and it sounded good, and we went with it, and it worked out pretty well for us.
How are we doing on our chemicals and salt right now, if we had another snowstorm, you know?
We're in good shape. Is it, we've got about 40% of our stockpile.
Good.
And so, that's about 400 tons.
Oh, fantastic.
That we have for salt.
Yeah, we have heard of surrounding communities that have run out.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's good, I'm glad we have that. Any other business?
No, Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?